Good evening and welcome to the public hearing of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education for June 23, 2025. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mrs. Burton, here. Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. McFarland?
Here.
Mrs. Acosta is here. President Bradford.
Yes, and we have a quorum. Item two is our audience communications. I don't have any slips currently. We, so we're going to go to move on to item three, the proposed 2025-26 budget and millage rates. And this evening, we're going to hear from Mrs. Smith. Welcome, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, President Bradford. And thank you to the board. As you know, this is a month-long, not month-long, months-long event, you know, leading up to tonight, which is what our proposed millage rates are for the coming school year, as well as our proposed budget. So we only have a few slides, but that's not because of the lack of detail we've gone into leading up to tonight, both at study sessions and committee of the whole meetings, and now tonight, a nice summary for our community. So on our next slide, just a reminder for our community, we have a number of funds that make up our overall budget. We've got the general fund and funded projects. We've got sinking fund, debt millage. We've got capital projects, a number of items that make up our budget. So we'll flip. You're waiting for me because I'm holding the number. That's, there we go. The ones with asterisks on them are ones that we're going to be discussing tonight because they are ones that we will levy a millage for this coming year. That would be our general fund, our debt retirement fund, and our sinking fund. The general fund will continue to be 18 mils, as is required for us to get the full funding for every student. So that is going to generate about $31.8 million for our general fund. The next millage is our debt retirement fund. This is a result of us selling bonds. We went to the community in 2021, and we were approved for $195 million bond, so that we could do improvements across the district. And we levy this millage to pay back those bonds. So we're proposing to continue to levy 4.1 mils, which is the exact same as it was last year, and that'll generate about $24.6 million for us. And last but not least is our sinking fund. The sinking fund, as you all know, goes to help various capital projects throughout the district. A lot of those funds are going towards our roofing projects currently, as well as our paving projects. This millage has gone down slightly from last year, and that's due to the heavily rollback. So last year, we levied 1.574 mils, and this year, it'll be 1.5664 mils. And we anticipate that'll generate about $9.4 million for us. So how that'll impact our budget for the general fund, we again went over in detail, our final budget amendment, we're projecting to end the year with about $30 million, or 16.1%. In the proposed budget for '25-'26, we recognize that expenditures are going to come in more favorable than what we budgeted. And the reason for that is, we legally can't spend a penny more than what the board has authorized. So we always have to be conservative, leaving a little bit of cushion for ourselves for unexpended bills that might come up in the month of June. So we are counting on coming in at least favorably by a million dollars. So you can see that the proposed beginning fund balance is 31 million. Our estimated revenues are 188.5 million. I'll pause there to say, of course, we do not have a budget from the state yet. That is something we've, you know, there's been a lot of talk about, but we haven't seen any final numbers. One thing that we are counting on, though, is a $10,000 per pupil foundation allowance. That's something we saw consistent between the governor's budget, as well as the Senate and the House. Beyond that, though, there was lots of variations between the different budgets. We're expecting expenditures to be about $190.4 million, which will leave us an ending fund balance of 29.1 million, or 15.3%. So that is what I have for the public hearing. I'm happy to answer any questions. This will be going on for our regular board meeting. That'll be happening momentarily for the board's consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
Just for the benefit of the public who may not be very familiar with the budget, we do have recommended by the Michigan's state, I'm sorry.
Michigan School Business officials.
Thank you. It was not flowing out of my mouth at all, that we do keep a fund balance of 15 to 20%. And if you could go into a few of the reasons why we need to keep that.
Absolutely. Well, a perfect example being the fact that we don't have a budget from the state. They, we have to start the school year off not knowing exactly how much is going to be coming in. So because we have a savings, we can ride things out a bit until we see the actual budget. If we didn't have that fund balance, we would have to be even more conservative with our planning for the coming year. We also have seen mid-year cuts in funding. We saw it as most recently as during the pandemic time, when we had a cut that came through in June that impacted that school year. So you're in your last month of the school year, and we've got a couple million dollars cut from our budget by the state. So thankfully, we again had a fund balance that could absorb that. The other item is, we're talking about our bonds and the debt retirement. Because we have the fund balance that we have, we were rated more highly for our bonds. So that means we can sell them and pay less interest. We get lower interest rates on those bonds because we're a more secure investment for investors. The other item that I think is wonderful is our cash flow. We start getting our state aid payments from the state in October, but of course, our school year starts well before October. Leading up, I want to say, all the way through 2015, we used to have to borrow money and pay interest on that to get us through, until we got our first state aid payment on October 20th. For the last 10 years, because we've had a savings, we have not had to borrow any money or pay any of that interest cost. So a lot of reasons why having a healthy fund balance is wise. And yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Bradford. And it's more of an observation than anything. It's not unusual, at least the time that I've been on the board, that the state has not had a budget by July 1st. So there's been a lot of sort of guessing, but educated guessing over the years, as to where we're going to, what money we're going to get. And what I can say is that you have made it easy on the budget, because every year, you come in around 1%, and sometimes below that, on an estimate of what the, we're actually going to get from the state. So that work has been outstanding over the last number of years, because we're, we really don't know what we're going to get, and we have to make adjustments. I mean, we have multiple adjustments during the year, depending on what the actual number is from the state. And we find ways to make adjustments during the year to stay on budget. But it's very difficult to do that, to have a budget when you don't know what the state is going to provide to you. So you've done an outstanding job on that, and I expect we'll be in the same 1% this year.
That's the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other questions or comments about the proposed budget and millage rates? Okay, seeing none? Thank you. We're all set. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. And at this point, we're on item four. We can go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and momentarily, we will set up to start our next meeting. So this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. All right, we're back. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Regular Board Meeting of June 23, 2025. And welcome to all our friends that are in the audience. I just want to say hello to everybody. Thanks for being here. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Gladly. Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. McFarland?
Here.
Mrs. Acosta is here. President Bradford?
Here, and we have a quorum. Mrs. Frank, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening again. If you'd like to follow along with tonight's meeting, and you're joining us in person, you can go out the doors to the left, and you'll find a copy of tonight's agenda on the table out there. If you're joining us from home, hello, you can go to our LPS website at www.livonypublicschools.org, click on the School Board tab, go on down to the Board Meeting Information, find the agendas, and then click that, onto that date, and your agenda will pop up for this evening. Tonight is a regular meeting, or what we call a voting meeting. If you've tuned in to watch this meeting, you may notice that there might not be a lot of discussion happening on some of the items. That's because we have seen and discussed these items multiple times prior to the meeting, mainly at our study session or our committee of the whole meetings. If you wish to hear more on some of these items, we ask that you go back and watch the Committee of the Whole Meeting, which is, you can find a much richer discussion and answers to many of the questions. Our committee of the whole meetings are recorded, and they also can be found on our website and via YouTube. So you can always go back to look at those. One item I would like to briefly mention is one of our community with character traits, respect. Our students learn, they model, and they follow this trait every day at school. Our board also follows and models this behavior, this important trait here at the table. We do not always agree with each other, and we have very differing opinions at times, but we treat each other with respect for our differences, and in the way that we convey them to each other. You have a word that this board will treat everyone in this room with respect, and we ask that you do the same for us. We feel that that's the best way to do our business, by modeling good behavior. So thank you. And with that, we're going to move on to item four, our communications. And 4A is the recognition of Blessings in a Backpack Community Service. And this is such a great one. Thank you. And we're going to hear from Mrs. Jenkins. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you, President Brett. No, no, I almost said Burton. Thank you, President Bradford. Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Oquist, tonight, it is my pleasure to welcome our friends from Blessings in a Backpack Livonia, to offer our sincere thanks for their many years of service to families of Livonia Public Schools. I'd like to introduce you to the volunteers who not only brought Blessings in a Backpack to Livonia with their very first fundraiser in November of 2014. I think I was at that one for trivia night at 100. But they also have dedicated so much to grow the program over the past decade. If I could have members of the group join me at the podium, we welcome, come on up here, and we'll kind of, just kind of stand right around me here. We have Susan Swantik, I'm sorry, Nicole Dant, Lauren Peters, Audra Rons, Garrett Rons, Nate Lipsky, and also a key volunteer over the years has been Heather Belcher, but she was unable to join us this evening. So this small and, small but mighty group of volunteers began the Livonia chapter of this national nonprofit organization with a community fundraiser, as I mentioned, in November of 2014, and distributed the first backpacks in January of 2015. Blessings in a Backpack is an organization that provides bags or backpacks of food for the weekend to families who are in need. In the beginning, the Livonia chapter distributed weekly bags to about 30 children across Livonia Public Schools. And over the course of 10 years, that number grew to 650 children across 17 schools in LPS. The district was happy to provide storage and packing space over the years. And tonight, we wanted to take a moment to publicly thank this group for their outstanding support of our families. Grant Elementary Principal Sheri Mazzoni stated it perfectly, when she said, "From the bottom of our hearts, thank you for wrapping your arms around our Grant Elementary community. Your unwavering support has filled more than just backpacks. It's filled hearts, hopes, and countless young lives. We are forever grateful." Riley Upper Elementary Principal John Wenstrom echoed the impact, saying, "Knowing the importance of healthy meals and the impact that they can have on student performance, we are grateful to the team of volunteers who work to secure meals for our most vulnerable students. Thank you for your partnership in helping all students be healthy, happy, and successful." And one more little comment from Randolph Elementary Principal Julie Lynn. She notes that she has had many families at Randolph mention how much they appreciated the food and the help that they needed to get through some hard times. And that the students, Julie, Mrs. Lynn also noted that the students really appreciated the good cereal that was included in the backpacks each weekend. So to officially recognize your longstanding efforts, we've prepared a special certificate, which reads Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Appreciation to Blessings in a Backpack Livonia for being a cherished partner of Livonia Public Schools for providing weekend food assistance to hundreds of our families over the past decade. And that's dated June 23, 2025, and signed by Superintendent Andrea Oquist. So I will turn that over to Lauren. And at this time, speaking of Lauren, I'd like to offer, turn it over to Lauren, who would like to offer a few words. It's all you.
Thank you. So as I'm sure most of you have heard, this is actually our final year of operation. Sometimes the children just don't get along with the parents' rules after a while, and that's kind of what's happened with our national organization. And we just have differing opinions on how to take things forward. We don't want anyone to think that the need isn't there. The need is certainly there. We are very confident in other groups that we know that we've been in contact with, that, that I believe will be stepping up and filling these roles. So we don't feel as though we're leaving anybody empty-handed. And sometimes you just have to watch out for the signs and see what they tell you. And right now, it just feels good to end on a high note with everything that we have done. So I just want to thank all of you for, all of your assistance over the years, for LPS providing us with the space at Marshall to run our operations. It's been great working with all the schools, all the staff. Everyone's been so accommodating. And we're just, it's going to be, it's, it's going to be hard for us to walk away from this. But it just seems like the right time. So thank you all, and we couldn't have done it without you.
And, but don't go away. I, I've, you can't leave without some swag. So.
I have. After all the bags they've given.
Yes. I love these cool LPS lunch bags, filled with a nice coffee mug and some other goodies in there would be nice for each of you.
Thank you.
Just as a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. Thank you. It would be really hard to express the value that this program has brought to our school. This organization, Blessings in a Backpack, is unique because they saw a need, and they didn't look around to see who could do it, or what would have to happen to make it happen. They simply stood up and filled the need. And that need has grown, and their support has grown. And I just can't thank you enough. There are children and families who depend on you. Your work has not gone unnoticed.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Oquist?
Thank you so much. Lauren, we've had so many great opportunities to connect on this wonderful endeavor of yours over the years. Thank you to each of you. But I, I think I probably had the most contact with you, Lauren. And each of you have hearts bigger than this room. The love that you give to children who you have never met, and the, the persistence that you've had to make this work for so many. What started out What started out as one school or two schools in your desire to make sure that there was no child who was going without, to be that many schools, and you hear those numbers and you hear 650 families, you hear 17 schools, that's every week. Every week, 40 weeks a year. This group and maybe a few others, but the dedicated group that was there, week in and week out, to fill the backpacks, to bring the backpacks back, to arrange the transportation to each of those sites, to make sure that they're distributed. There is so much that goes into this program. I don't think people will ever know the amount of time that you each gave to this. We, our hearts are just filled with gratitude for each one of you. We love how much you love on our kids. I'm really excited to hear that there may be another avenue. Be sure to reach out because anything we can do to support that, we're shoulder to shoulder with you.
For sure.
Thank you to each of you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight and for all your years of service. I can't imagine the amount of time either that you've put into this program and how beneficial it was for our students, so thank you so much.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to item 4B, our district update from our superintendent.
Thanks so much.
And this is our final one for the year, right?
President Burton, can you believe, or President?
It's happening.
Gosh, I don't think I've done that in a long time, President Bradford.
Okay. I see, I see where we're going here.
Yep, yep.
Okay. I see, I see, I feel you, okay.
You, you should feel the love. All right, so we're going to share an update, and let's get rolling because we've got lots of other great things to get onto the agenda as well. So a few of these are highlights from the end of the year, but we are already starting into the summer with some great programming. So we'll just share first some end of year fun, so thanks to those schools that have sent us some great pictures or shared them on social media. We'll start with a great sixth grade celebration at Johnson Upper Elementary and move on to some others across the district. Field Day, I don't, I don't know about you, but as kids, that was always one of the best days of the year. Our physical education teachers and our, our groups do such a great job organizing those events for our kids, so Webster was having a ton of fun. I think that middle picture looks like a ton of fun. Not 100% sure, but looks a little bit like Twister with pool noodles. And here's another one from Johnson. They had their sore celebration, and I don't know if you noticed the gentleman in the center, but his hair is a unique color. What color would we say that is, Mr. Traub?
That was orange this year.
Orange this year, okay. That was brave. Love it.
It took too long, though. It didn't take too long.
That's, that's, it looks great. So sore celebration, recognizing students for all of their work in exhibiting respectful behavior and the tenants of what makes our Johnson Jayhawks sore. We had Frost, each of our middle schools does a great send-off for our eighth graders, so you'll see some fun here at Frost Middle School, through the school, in the courtyard, in the gym, in the cafeteria, lots of things going on. All of these things take so much coordination, whether it's PTA volunteers, school administration, our activities directors, all of the staff it takes to make this happen, but such special times for our kids that when they celebrate those, those momentous times of leaving each level and moving on to the next. I don't know if you heard, but PAWS was in the district. PAWS was over at Hays, and how cool that, I believe it was Mrs. Thompson, their EST, who arranged to have PAWS come and visit and help open their new refreshed baseball diamond. Thanks to Mrs. Cox, our secretary at Hays, she wrote a grant to be able to do some great work over there in helping to get that baseball diamond back up and running, and so the kids were pretty excited to see PAWS there and help open it. So thank you so much to the LPS Education Foundation, who was able to support that grant written by Secretary Mrs. Cox. Some more end of the year fun here at Frost. They have not only peer connections, which a number of our schools have a peer connections program, they also started a Peer Link class this year, which was a 10-week option for general education students to pair up with peers in our class, in our center classrooms, and attend elective classes with them. So Peer Link was a great new program this year offered at Frost, and we're so proud of those awesome relationships that were made. So you see those smiles of our kids having some fun at the end of the year picnic. A little bit more at Kennedy, so it had, all had their shades, and then we see the kindergarten team with some, some new outfits for the day, so those might have been fun to get around the classroom. But it just goes to show you all of the effort that is put in to bring a really positive close to the end of the school year, and it's each of our folks at our schools, every, every role that we have in our schools and our district to make those kind of things happen and to make those moments be the memorable ones for our kids. Here are our great crossing guards, so we want to thank all of our crossing guards. Here are two of our, of our crossing guards who are at Kennedy Elementary School, but we have crossing guards across the district. It can be a bit of a thankless job as folks are trying to get to work or other places and can be maybe a little bit impatient, but these folks that are hired by the police department help us both in, at our Livonia Bay schools and Westland Bay schools to get our kids across safely, and we're so grateful for that. They come at the beginning of the day and the end of the day in all kinds of weather, so be sure to look out and, and, and give them an extra bit of patience and a smile when you see them. The camps have started. We have had a huge turnout. We had over 100 kiddos at our Franklin Football Camp, and each of our high schools had great, great youth camps to start the year. Thankfully, it wasn't quite as toasty as it has been the past couple of days, so all three high schools hosted youth camps, and it's not just football, it's basketball and volleyball and lots of different things happening across the district. I think we're going to see a couple more. We have kicked off learning in L-Town. The camps started last week, so we have a really cool pirate theme for our little ones and a detective investigation type of theme for the older kids, and so it, it seems like we just got out of school, but we're well underway with our learning happening across. We have three camps happening simultaneously. We've never done it that way, so we're hoping that we'll get some better attendance than when it wanes into the summer. So here, you just see in different locations, our students practicing and keeping their skills sharp, but they always have some really cool interactive themes and our staff teaching in each of those locations. We had a great ALT wrap-up with our leaders last week, two weeks ago?
Two weeks.
Was it two weeks ago already? Gosh. We had a full day together, and we really spent a lot of time reflecting on the year, taking a look at what some of our core priorities were and how we have been able to fulfill those and some plans we have moving into next year. And one of the things we asked our leaders to do to start was to write their own headline for this year, and that was a great activity because they were able to really share some pretty spectacular things that have, have been highlights and accomplishments of their students and staff over the course of the year. So we, it was great to have our team together. Nope, you can go ahead and show that, and that was, there we go. That was the whole group. I'm sorry for anyone who was cut off on either end. That really was the best picture on my camera roll, so we'll keep working on that. But we're, our LPS leadership team from the schools and from our coordinators are wrapping up over the course of the next several days, and we hope they get some well-deserved downtime to rejuvenate and rest up for the next school year. We had a great group of aspiring administrators, and so we had, I think about 23?
About that.
Staff members in the area of elementary, secondary, post-secondary, special education, who may be interested in seeking a leadership role at some point in their career. And so we had a great group of leaders, and I want to thank Mrs. Keats and Mr. Obate, who put together a really engaging program where this team met monthly, and it was really our own homegrown leadership program of aspiring administrators. So the wrap-up for that was just a couple of weeks ago as well, and so we're excited to see what they do next. I want to thank the board and members of our cabinet team for attending the Chamber of Commerce Superintendent's Panel held. I'm going to just reference in the recent past, one week runs into the next, I can't believe it's already June 23rd. I think this was on the 12th. Franklin was host for the superintendents from Garden City, Wayne Westland, Clarenceville, and Livonia. So I, I, one of the things I really appreciate is that President Dan West and the chamber value the impact of a strong education system on our community. And so the fact that they take time each year to hold this panel and have members of our business community, have some of our legislators there, and really talk about the current events in public education and, and what is happening. I, I love that the chamber takes that time to highlight the work of what's happening in our school districts. So I was, as always, so proud to represent Livonia Public Schools and thank everyone who was able to attend. Want to give some shout-outs. As we wrapped up the year, we graduated over 1,000 students from our, we had five different graduations, so you see Churchill here, and then we have our students from, our Patriots from Franklin and Stevenson Spartans. We had our LTP grads, we had their certificate of completion ceremony over at Schoolcraft. It was absolutely wonderful, and I believe we...
Oh, we did Garfield last week.
Oh, we did Garfield, so we had the Western Way Skill Center, our Garfield program also on the Friday of graduation weekend, and we were, the one thing I love about Garfield and LTP graduation ceremonies is they're so personal to each student because there's a much smaller number of students, but we get to hear about each individual and the impact that they've made in their program, and we're so proud of them and where they're headed next. So to all of our graduates, we wish you the very best in the next steps in your journey, and we're so proud to have been a small part of that along the way, so congratulations. And we had some great opportunity the last couple of weeks of school. This is not highlighting everyone who received one, but we have lots of pictures from members of our staff team who reached 30 years of service, and we had such a blast. Mr. Green, is that you? Did you start when you were 10? Wow. No, it, it really is a huge milestone, and one of the things we share with our staff members who we were able to recognize is that this is going to be less and less common. I think we're going to just see more transancy, more movement, just that is today's society, and as I was just reading recently a book about the generations of workers, we're just going to see maybe less of that longevity and more of that, that movement as a natural element. So we really want to recognize, and we, we give a special personalized prism and crystal to each one of those folks and thank them for their service, and it's always great to hear about how their career started in LPS and, and where they're headed next, so it's been fantastic. Lots of, lots of recognition across many of our schools, and we'll have more to kick off this coming school year as well. And this year, our board team, we're going to have two 40 years.
Oh, wow.
Yes, yes, two 40 years, which will be very exciting. So we want to highlight, just to wrap up our, our, our update, we want to highlight some of our students who were part of the state, the MHSAA Track and Field Championships that took place, was it in Rockford? I think it was in Rockford this year. Yes, Rockford. And so we had Charlotte from Churchill, and we had our regional champ Peyton from Churchill, as well as Devon with the Discus. We had Ava Peters, very own daughter of Mrs. Lauren Peters, who finished 10th in the state with the first under-five-minute mile in Franklin track history. Yes. And by the way, Ava was on the East Coast, no big deal, in the New Balance Finals, National Finals this past weekend. And raced in the mile race against the best in the country, of which she is one as well. So huge shout-out to her. We were so proud to have her representing LPS out there. It's a big deal to get to the New Balance Nationals, so congratulations to her. And I don't want to forget also Kalen Hughes, who is the daughter of two of our LPS staff members, and she had eighth place in the 1600 meter. So if you're in the top eight, you're considered All-State. It's a, it is a really big deal, and it is, boy, it's a tough sport, Track and Field, and we are really excited with what they were able to do this year. We had our Churchill, we're our KLA East Champions in Track and Field. Pretty cool, both boys and girls earned that distinction. Stevenson softball, we had some great all-conference athletes. You see two of our seniors there. Another great team this year, they continue to be, we really had some great softball teams across the district this year, and it was fun, fun competition all the way around. All-conference baseball, hard to read the names, but if you see this online, we always put these online and send these out, but you'll see some of our students who made all-conference or all-district. And we had our Franklin baseball player, Corbin. He was named second-team All-State, also a pretty big deal. And actually, we just saw Franklin. They were out at the East, we had a number of our players out at the East-West game down at Comerica, and one of our assistant coaches, Mr. Tandries, Coach Tandries, was recognized as an assistant coach in the state, so that was pretty neat. That's not on here, that's just a little ad lib for your information. And then we had the Churchill baseball team, back-to-back KLA East Division Championship title, so lots of, lots to celebrate across the district. And finally, soccer, there's more. Wow. Our soccer all-conference student athletes and both from Stevenson and Franklin, and you see our, our proud students there with their coaches. And Livonia United, so we had our, our boys and girls lacrosse teams had a number of students make all-conference, and I believe they were also, were they not KLA East champs?
Kevin's not there.
Yes. Thank you, Kevin, the voice from beyond. Yes, that was him. And mark your calendars, the golf outing, if you haven't signed up, will be there Saturday, July 19th. We would love for you to support the foundation if you are available. We'd love to have you join us for the golfing, or Mr. McFarland, they can just join for the Afterglow, is that correct?
Yes, I think we have two foursomes left and then maybe a couple random spots if you're just a single golfer, and if you want to just come for lunch and, and a good time with raffle, there's great raffles by a lot of local businesses, so please come and support. It's a great event, third annual, trying to grow it a little bit bigger for the kids every year, so thanks.
Awesome. And then finally, bounce back to school. Yes, we're already planning it. I know you can't wait. It's Thursday, August 14th, from 5:00 to 8:00, Riley Upper Elementary. Get ready to bounce, get ready to enjoy the cotton candy and all of the other things we have to offer. All right, thank you so much, President Bradford.
Oh, Mrs. Oakwist, that was, that was awesome. Thank you. Well, when you have a district with what, almost 14,000 students, there's a lot going on.
There's a lot going on.
And then graduation to boot. There's so much to say.
Best time of the year.
Yeah, best time of the year. All right, thus we got to keep going, so we'll get moving. We're going to go on to item 4C, Audience Communications. Audience Communications is a time set aside for the board to listen to the concerns of our community. It's not a question-and-answer period, but rather a time set aside for us to listen thoughtfully to your concerns. The speakers, each speaker has up to three minutes to speak. Mrs. Frank will be our timekeeper tonight. If you hear the tone go off, we ask that you politely finish and wrap up your comments. We will, the board is responsible for three main roles, hiring and evaluating our superintendent, adopting policies that give the district direction to set the priorities and achieve its goals, and also adopting and overseeing our budget. So if your comments pertain to any of those three roles and you would like a response to your question, you would expect to hear from a member of our board. If your comments pertain to anything else or what we call the quote "day-to-day operations of the school district," you should expect to hear back from our superintendent or a member of the cabinet team. So with that, I have one blue slip this evening, and that would be for Robert Lancaster. Welcome, Robert. And there's a button there that you press and it'll turn green, and that'll allow you to speak.
Is this thing working? Is this thing working?
It is.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I am Robert Lancaster. I am a... I am a proud senior Stevenson, formerly of the Career Center, where I took Mr. Mann's Criminal Justice class, very fun. And I'm involved with numerous extracurriculars, including but not limited to acting in Stevenson's Drama Department. I'm a team manager on our hockey team, and I am a member of DECA, and I have won awards in each of these. I've been a student in this district since I was in preschool back in Perrinville. However, there is a critical issue to us students that I feel needs to be addressed. The start time at all, all of our high schools is 7:25 a.m., which for many of us, including myself, is a bit early, really early. The Center for Disease Control and American Psychological Association, both have highly recommended that high schools start no earlier than 8:30 in the morning, and has linked starting high school to students getting inadequate sleep and sleep deprivation, which has various detrimental impacts upon our physical and mental health, including high blood pressure, sleeping in class, poor or reckless decisions and judgment, depression, anxiety, psychosis. All these side effects are cited from the Cleveland Clinic. There was a period during the 2020, '21, and '21, '22 school years in which the high school and middle school start times were flipped. This made the issues compound a bit more onto the students who were in middle school at the time, including myself, and the rest of the class of 2026, which means we will be entering our sixth consecutive school year, starting at 7:25 in the morning, as of this upcoming August. Although I should note state, I explicitly do not recommend solving this by flipping the schedule again. Please don't do that. School, I'm sure you are all well-aware, that the foundation of it is built upon educating students to create a good well-being for themselves in the future. What about their current well-being? You know, why not start school later? You know? I would hope you all can see my point of view on this position, and hopefully you can make the change I've been hoping for after all these years. Do you have any questions, rebuttals, anything like that?
Well, we don't usually, we wouldn't give an answer here at the board table, but we will take it into consideration.
All right.
And we were happy that you came forward to, to give your opinion and, and how you feel about early start, or late start.
Sorry to kill the moment, everybody, sorry to kill the moment.
No, thank you so much. Okay, moving on to Item 4, our Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Acosta, thank you.
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District, sorry, approved the following Consent Agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. Item 5A, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of May 19, 2025. 6A, Authorization to Accept Resignations. 6B, Notice of Discontinuance of Teaching Contracts. 6C, Authorization to Recall Teachers. 7A, Approval of Revision to 2025-2026 Lease Agreements. 7B, Approval of MHSAA Membership for 2025-2026. 7C, Approval of Food Service Purchase for 2025-2026.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the Consent Agenda. These items have been individually reviewed by our board and the committees, and they're annual items that we, we typically do. So, that's why they're placed on the Consent Agenda. I would ask if any member of the board wishes to remove an item from the Consent Agenda. Is there anybody that wishes to remove an item? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the Consent Agenda. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford.
Yes, and the motion carries. We are going to move down to Item 7, Personnel Matters, and we're going to go ahead on to 7D, the Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Educational Administrators. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Burton.
Moved that the Board of Education enter into a three-year contract with the Livonia Education Administrators, whose agreement has been ratified by LEEDs members. Said contract shall continue until June 30th, 2028. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Educational Administrators. This evening, we're going to hear from Mrs. Keats.
Yes, good evening, thank you. This is a great moment to be here, and we have so many of our groups here this evening. And we've, we've looked forward to this evening for, for many months now. So, first up on the, the agenda today is our LEEDs group. And this is a group of our administrators, principals, coordinators, assistant principals, athletic directors, people who serve at LCTC and Western Way Skill Center and everything in between. We came with a very positive agreement between the district and this group, serving as LEEDs on the LEEDs group. It's kind of redundant there. We had Ben Hillard and Dennis Garrity, who are the co-presidents, Shannon Wheeler, Rob Witherspoon, and Lindsay Rousseau. We are really excited to bring this agreement to you guys tonight, the board. And I know Ben is in attendance back there, and I can't see beyond the sea of people in front of me. So, thank you for being here, and we recommend this agreement before the board this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Keats. Are there any questions or comments before the board? Seeing none, which is good. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Educational Administrators. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford.
Yes, and the motion carries. And at this time, I believe we are bringing anybody who's here under the LEEDs to come on up to sign the agreement and to, and we would like to congratulate you.
Wow!
Thank you, Mr. Hillard! All right! Want to bring it to the table, right? Main table?
Okay.
Thank you, Ben. Congratulations. Okay, I will. I can get that going.
Good to see you.
Thanks, Ben. Go ahead. All right, we're going to pass it back down this way.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Mr. Hillard! All right, we're moving on to Item 7E, the Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Education Association. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Moved that the Board of Education enter into a three-year contract with the Livonia Education Association, whose agreement has been ratified by LEA members. Said contract shall continue until June 30th, 2028.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the approval of collective bargaining agreement between the Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Education Association. Yeah, Mrs. Burton?
Just to, to remind our board members, as I discussed in the previous meeting, I will be abstaining from this vote because my husband is a soccer coach at Stevenson High School, and the coaches are covered under this agreement. So, therefore, I will be abstaining.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Acosta?
The same applies for me, as my husband is a coach for football, so I will abstain also.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, we have this motion on the floor. Mr. Francis?
The motion...
Jarvis, would you please reread the motion?
Moved that the Board of Education enter into a three-year contract with the Livonia Education Association, whose agreement has been ratified by LEA members. Said contract shall continue until August 15th, 2028.
Support.
Thank you, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the approval of collective bargaining agreement between the Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Education Association. And this evening, we're going to hear from Mr. Abate.
Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, the agreement we'll, we are bringing forward tonight for LEA, we are, we are quite proud of, and I want to highlight one, one item. And that is, we have a unique process that we've engaged in the last two rounds of bargaining with our, our LEA group that is called interest-based bargaining. And it is long, it's, it's arduous, it has its moments like any, any negotiation. But, what it has at its core is a willingness and an agreement to spend the time that is needed so that we can understand the needs and the issues of both the district and the bargaining group, in this case, our, our teachers' union. And, you know, I, I believe, and I'm very proud of the fact that we've come out of both the last two contracts, I think with an even stronger partnership, even stronger commitment to, to, to upholding the, the agreement itself and to making sure that everybody is, is well taken care of. And we, we take that very seriously, it's very important. So, I want to thank LEA President Caliety, LEA Vice President Megan Briskly, MEA Uniserve Director Eric Longusky, Frost Building Representative and LMC Director Stuart Nairbrian Shinwar, and, excuse me, Franklin Building Representative Nicole Young as the bargaining team for LEA. We have a good deal here, and we, we hope that you're as proud as we are to have been a part of it, and we recommend its passage, your vote for it tonight.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Abate. Are there any questions or comments before the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the approval of collective bargaining agreement between the Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Education Association. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton and Mrs. Acosta abstain. President Bradford.
Yes, and that motion carries. Congratulations. If we can have the members of the LEA please step forward to sign the agreement and to come through the line, we would appreciate that. Come through the receiving line. Why am I standing so hard?
We're just waiting for them to come in.
You're all going to be standing.
It's good to get some exercise. Thank you, Kelly.
Congratulations, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, good to see you.
Thank you so much!
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Brad, appreciate it.
Thank you, Brad. All right, Eric, thank you so much.
Thanks for the hard work.
All right, thank you so much. We are going to move on to Item 7F. One moment. The Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Livonia Public Schools and the Supervisory Employees Association. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mr. Johnson?
Moved that the Board of Education enter into a three-year contract with the Livonia Supervisory Employees Association, whose agreement has been ratified by CEELs members. Said contract shall continue until June 30th, 2028.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the Supervisory Employees Association. This evening, we're going to hear from Mr. Abate.
Yes, thank you. So, this is our, this group is, they are building supervisors, our supervisory staff for all the various maintenance and whatnot, things that happen in our building to take care of our facilities. These, I have to say, these fine gentlemen in the back of the room, Tony Mercer, Keith Craggett, Mike Wurlinger, Rob Wood, supported by Eric Longusky from, from the MEA. They are, it is hard to find a greater group of guys. And, and we, when we negotiate with them, it truly is, it truly is a pleasure. It's a great partnership. It's, it's, we've had just really, really fruitful sessions as a group, and we come out the other side feeling great, look at him smiling back there. And we, we come out feeling great and proud of, of the work that they've done, proud of the work that they do every single day for LPS, and just really pleased to bring their, their deal forward for, for a vote. We do recommend its passage tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Abate. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing, seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the Supervisory Employees Association. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford.
Yes, and the motion carries. Congratulations. Okay, guys, please step forward. It's your turn to come on up.
Come on down.
Come on up!
Don't be bashful.
Awesome job, thank you, thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you for all your hard work. Tony, thank you! Nice shirt, I like the color. Thank you so much for all you're doing for the district. Again, thank you, Eric.
Great job, Eric.
All righty, moving on to Item 7G, the Approval of Collective Bargaining Agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Para-Professionals Association.
President Bradford.
May I have a motion, please? Oh, sorry, Dave. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mr. McFarland?
Moved that the Board of Education enter into a three-year contract with the Livonia Para-Professional Association, whose agreement has been ratified by LPA members. Said contract shall continue until June 30th of 2028.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Para-Professionals Association. This evening, we're going to hear from Mrs. Keats.
Yes, good evening again, thank you. We are excited to bring yet another contract before the board this evening, this one for our LPA, our Para-Professionals Association. This is a group of very, very hard-working ladies, and I say ladies because it was all ladies at the table, plus Eric Longusky as well, so I didn't forget about you. In addition to, that is. In, in, so hard-working and so much experience sitting at the table, that they even had custom t-shirts made that said "Vintage Para-Professionals," or "Para-Pros." So, we know they have years and years of experience that can't even be measured, and we're certainly thankful for the partnership in our schools, in the district, and we're excited to bring forth this agreement for you this evening.
Thank you, Mrs....
Oh, and I forgot to mention, the lovely ladies who are here in attendance, Sue Ganyu, Carrie Shelton, Shelley Dolan, Chris Flanagan, and they were assisted by Julie Ertman as well, who is not here, and of course, Eric Longusky as well, from the MEA.
Awesome, thank you, Mrs. Keats. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Okwes, we still have to vote. She's excited, she's excited for this one, okay. We have a, we have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of collective bargaining agreement between the Livonia Public Schools and the Livonia Para-Professionals Association. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford.
Yes, and the motion carries.
Now you can clap.
All right, come on up, ladies. Vintage ladies, come on up. Here come the vintage ladies.
Every hour vintage.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a good summer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Frank, Mrs. Acosta, congratulations.
You can congratulate her.
Thanks, Chris.
Your fan.
And I like your tops. Congratulations. You look really good. Yeah, you walked through a dress. You look great, Eric. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's been a long time, Eric.
Yeah, I've seen you around here. All right, moving on to item seven H, the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Oh, Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District enter into a three-year contract with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI Local 118, whose agreement was ratified by AFSMI members. Said contract shall continue until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Support.
Support.
All right, duel. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. That's right. Keep your clapping. Hold your clapping to the end. We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI Local 118. We're going to hear from Mrs. Keats.
Yes, thank you again. This agreement is literally hot off the presses as of five o'clock this evening, and it was a yeoman's work to get it all organized. And so thank you for your teamwork there. Our AFSMI group are, literally, without them, we would not get kids to and from school. They would not be fed. The buildings would be a mess. The grounds would be unkept. There are so many behind-the-scenes jobs that our AFSMI folks do, day in and day out, between food service and bus driving, our kitchen staff, our custodial staff, all of the skilled trades that before starting this job, I had no idea we even employed in this district. So it's all of these men and women behind the scenes that literally are the engine behind the school that keep us running every single day. Without them, we couldn't do what we do. So I want to thank the team, Austin Harrison President, Barbie McCoy, Chief Steward, Quentin Coleman, and the AFSMI representative who could not be here this evening, D'Angelo Malcolm, for your partnership and your work on this agreement. We feel like it's a great deal for the district and the hard group of men and women that you serve. So thank you so much, and we bring this before you this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Keats. Any questions or comments before the board? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the approval of the collective bargaining agreement between Livonia Public Schools and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI Local 118. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Congratulations. Okay, we need those folks to come on forward. Come on up.
Don't be shy.
Oh, and by the way, we're going to take a break after item I. To congratulate everybody. I don't know why I'm leaning down like that. So we can congratulate you again. Yeah, we want to congratulate you again. Okay, before we move on to the next item, I think, Mrs. Oakquist, did you want to say something?
Yes.
Okay, don't leave yet. Mrs. Oakquist has something to say.
Just in case you didn't hear enough during the update. I really, I wanted to take a moment and thank each and every team member who's here tonight, the ones who couldn't be here this evening, and I really want to acknowledge also our two Directors of Human Resources, Mrs. Keats and Mr. Abate, Mrs. Smith, our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Francis, who was a member of a number of the teams. He kept fighting his way in, wanting to be part of it all. I know Mrs. Sproul helped us along with Mr. Etoo on our Para-Professionals contract, correct? Yes, assistant. Thank you. And Mr. Green on both LSA and LEA. So thank you so much, and to each of you who were part of the team, and to all of our staff. This is a really, really important accomplishment for our school district. It is really important to our Board of Education. It is really important to me, and I know it's really important to each of the people that we serve. And the fact that we can bring these forward and have that stability for our folks over the next three years means the world to us, and it takes a lot of work to get there. So people sitting in this room have been working on this, starting back in January, and over many long days and long evenings, and it does take a lot of listening, a lot of learning from one another, and we are grateful for the guidance of the board and the trust of the board to move into these negotiations. And to know that we are set with each of these groups for the next three years provides a level of stability for our staff that I think can't be understated. They are truly what makes the magic happen every day in our school district. We have one more team, very important team to us, LSA that we're hoping to also bring to you very soon. We're working hard on that, another very valued group to our district. And of course, all of our non-affiliated folks, we will have all of those contracts in place by June thirtieth as well. So lots of work on the part of many, many people, and I want to acknowledge that, and also say thank you to everyone who is a part of making it happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakquist. All right. We're going to move on to item seven I, the approval of recommendation for Coolidge Principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Mrs. Acosta?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and appoint Cynthia Pearson as Principal at Coolidge Elementary School.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of recommendation for Coolidge Principal. And this evening, we're going to hear from Mr. Abate. Oh, Mrs. Keats.
Surprise.
Surprise.
So this is one of the most exciting things we do in these roles. Settling on wonderful contracts is one. Bringing on people in any role is also one of the most amazing things we get to do. And tonight, we have an LPS vet that we are nominating for a new role as the Principal at Coolidge. So if you've been around LPS for the last twenty-nine or so years, chances are that your path has crossed with the lovely Mrs. Cindy Pearson. And looking out into the audience this evening, now I don't have glasses on, which I should, but I see folks from Cooper, Johnson, and Coolidge here in attendance. And if I'm missing anyone, and Roosevelt, okay, so that goes to show you, we are bringing a solid recommendation before you this evening. Mrs. Pearson began in LPS in nineteen ninety-six, and she started her career at Cooper Center as a cross-categorical teacher. She soon followed as an EST at Roosevelt, and I love the story that as soon as Bill Green was named as Principal at Roosevelt, she's like, mm, I'm out. I'm just kidding. I say it with love for both of those people. I think he tells the story as much more than anyone, quite honestly. So her first foray into administration came in two thousand and fifteen when she accepted the position as the Federal Programs Coordinator, in which was her calling, serving underserved children in the Title I world, in the EL world, and so many other worlds in our schools. It wasn't soon after that, in two thousand and twenty-one, she said, hey, this AP gig might be fun, because I'm pretty sure you were serving in an interim role or something in that capacity. Man, we've tapped you a lot of times, Cindy. So she made it official and was the AP at Johnson Upper Elementary. It was just a few short years after that where she took on a new adventure at Cooper Upper Elementary, where she returned home, so to speak. And once again, Cindy answered the call when we needed her to fill in, starting in January, as the interim Principal at Coolidge. She was taking on a new challenge. She was leaving the world with a partner and going out solo in the K-4 world, where they are little and they are fast. So she stepped in and never missed a beat. We just assumed, yep, Cindy's got it under control. We haven't heard from her, or it's all good. So to say this was a slam dunk, this was a slam dunk. When the posting went up and Cindy applied, we were thrilled. Needless to say, we bring forth this recommendation this evening. And anyone who knows Cindy, and really, I'm terrible at estimating, but there's probably twenty-plus people in the room that are here for her this evening to celebrate her. She leads with confidence. She leads with grace. She leads with poise. She leads with maturity. No one would doubt any of those things. And when we put out a feedback survey for what the staff would want to see in the next Principal at Coolidge, typically, this is anonymous, but I said, hey, just shoot me an email personally, and man, did my inbox flood with people so excited to tell me everything about the next Principal, AKA Cindy Pearson. This quote kind of summed it up, and this went to our all leaders in the district, and I thought just everyone needed to hear this. Mrs. Pearson has brought a renewed sense of warmth, stability, and vision to our school community. She leads with compassion and care, always putting students at the center of her decisions. Her kindness and approachability have fostered a sense of trust among families, staff, and students alike, and her presence is felt in the hallways, in classrooms, and at every school event. That just sums up Cindy Pearson, and we're so thrilled to bring her forward for this role this evening. So just the nuts and bolts of it, Cindy earned her BA in Learning Disabilities and her MS in Administration from Adana University, and pending your approval, we would like to nominate her as the next Principal of Coolidge Elementary.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Keats. Are there any questions or comments from the board? We are excited. We want to vote. All right. So we have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of recommendation for Coolidge Principal. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Congratulations.
Truly, I feel like it's kindergarten all over again, you know, that beginning and that fresh start, and how lucky I am and humbled by each of you to Superintendent Oakquist, President Bradford, and the board. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. It truly came at a time that I was ready for a challenge and ready to serve again with many people at Coolidge, and it's such a community school to be able to do that. And I'm so privileged to have that neighborhood feeling and five hundred-plus students and staff. The staff immediately opened their arms and said, let's go, and they're here tonight. They have walked beside me. There is, we're all leaders in that building, and I'm so honored to be part of that. And I do have my school family here represented from Roosevelt and Johnson and obviously Coolidge, so I'm so very, very lucky. But I want to thank a couple people as we move into this. One of them, of course, is the person that I said, I'm leaving Roosevelt. You're now the Principal, and I'm going on. But it is Bill Green. We were colleagues together at Cooper, and there wasn't a time that he said no to me when I had one of my special ed students that were mainstreaming. He would say, absolutely, bring them down. Let's try it. Let's give them an opportunity to do this. And so from there, now being my boss and giving me the call that said in December, I have a question to ask you, and you can say three choices. It was yes, I'll think about this, and then, of course, if you're going to say no, you're going to say no. And I asked my kids, Max and Jenna, and said, what do you think? And they both, Jenna said, this will be hard, Mom. And are you sure? And Max said, go ahead. And, but he gave me that opportunity and has really, honestly, every week made some sort of touch point with me, whether he visited Coolidge or called me on the phone to say, what do you need? What can we do to support you, and how is it going? So how very fortunate to have a leader like that who cared so much and wanted it to be so successful. Rob Witherspoon and the Cooper community for their sacrifice of letting me go and letting me try this, and then hearing I was going to try to stay. So so very grateful for them, because they didn't let me do it once. They let me come and be there twice and serve them, and what a wonderful community that is. And I even had the PTA come over and visit me. So how very fortunate for me. And Coolidge staff, they, they're champions. They really are. They really just do what needs to get done for our students, and how lucky am I to land there? So, and then, of course, my family, my children are very, very important to me. And then my mother, who said, give yourself one gift, and if you do nothing else, get yourself an education. And so I did. And lastly, of course, my husband, because we sacrificed many things together so that I could do this. He always took the first week of school off to take the kids to school and so that I could be at school, and then at night, when I had open house or anything like that, he made sure that he was there. And so, of course, this decision, although not here, he is here in spirit to have guided this decision and to be here in this wonderful ending. You know, just so great that I really am going to be the Principal of Coolidge. Thank you so much. I'm greatly humbled. I really am. Thank you.
That makes me so happy. All right. At this time, we are going to take a short break, because we are going to re-congratulate. Jeez, we didn't vote. I was clapping before that. We voted already.
We got really distracted, guys.
We sure did. Not me. I knew we were going on a break. All right, I like a break. Okay, so we're going to take a five-minute break to congratulate, re-congratulate all our friends out here, and Cindy Pearson, and our and Cindy Pearson, and our blessings in a backpack. And anybody else that's here, we'll congratulate too. So we'll be back in a few minutes.
All right, welcome back to the regular meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education for June 23rd. We are going to move along here. We're on item seven J, the approval of contract for LPS superintendent. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mr. McFarland.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District approve the employee employment agreement for Superintendent Andrea Oquist. Further move that President and Secretary of the Board of Education be authorized to sign Superintendent Oquist's employment contract.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of contract for LPS superintendent. And this evening, we're going to hear from the Chair of the Personnel Committee, Mr. McFarland.
So as a board, we independently met with Bill Weber with the Michigan Leadership Institute, and feel that we have come up with a fair and equitable contract for President Oquist. It is three-year finances, five-year term, which is as custom with all of our contracts. And we are very excited for her to continue her outstanding stewardship of the district moving forward. Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
This, as a school board, we technically employ one individual, and that is our superintendent. And our superintendent has the privilege of employing the other 2,000 people that work for our school district. We are unbelievably blessed to have you serving as our leader of our district. You have been a member of this district since you were a student in this district and really never left. Superintendent position is unique because you have to be an expert not only in education, but also in business, because this is an organization to run, and in legislation, and how the whole legislative process works, and how to be an effective member of influencing that legislation so that we have the finances to serve the students that are entrusted to us. You are exquisite. It is an extremely difficult role to fill. And what I believe is unique also with your service of our district is the number of people that we see in so many buildings all around our district that know that you know them and you care about them. I literally ran into a friend of mine a few years ago who is employed by the district, and she said, "Do you know Andrea knows who I am?" And I said, "Yes." She goes, "No, but she like, she called me by name, and she said, 'Oh, you changed your hair.'" Like, she knows me! But that kind of depth of care of not only the students, but our staff and our parents in our district is not taken lightly. It's what we've learned as school board members going around the state for various conferences is this is unique. I would like to say that everyone has similar experiences, just larger or smaller, depending on the size of their district. But unfortunately, we've learned that that's not true. Not everyone is blessed with a leader like you. We don't take it for granted for one moment, and we hope it lasts for many, 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 many more years. How's that? I know that's really rude to though people who would like to retire at some point in their lives, but we just could not think any more highly of you. And it's my honor to handle this contract tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Burton. I think you speak for all of us. Oh, Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. I heard that the life cycle for superintendent in Michigan is about three years. And there's not a person sitting at this table who isn't grateful to wake up every morning and know that you're still here at the helm. And people forget that a school district is a business, and you are the CEO, and we could not be in better hands. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Johnson?
What Liz said and what Colleen said. But to thank you for your willingness to continue in this role, we so much appreciate it. I said to Cindy Pearson that her movement into the principalship was a little bit déjà vu because she said that, you know, she was a little bit unwilling. She had had kids. But when we as a board heard that she was willing to take that position, we were like, "Yes, that was perfect." And I go back 10 years, and we had the same feeling. That's why I said it was déjà vu. I just remember very vividly being at the conference in Traverse City, sitting in the lobby when Randy came in, and I think I was board president at the time. And he sat down, and you had the interim, and we were purposely not pushing you. We want to let you have your time. It was your decision. Colleen and I spoke about it numerous times. And when Randy sat down and he looked at me and he said, "I think I have some good information." And I looked at him, and I said, "Do tell." And he says, "Not here." And I said, "Well, let's go to dinner." And we went downtown, and he told me that he had spoken to you and that you were willing to remove the interim from your title. And I said, "Randy, do not play with my emotions." He said, "No, I'm serious." And I said, "You couldn't have given me better notice than that." And then I said, "Yes, this is, we're going to be just fine." So thank you so much for your willingness to do this.
Mrs. Acosta.
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I think you, my colleagues had pretty much said it all. But I just, I appreciate that you are the type of leader that not just leads with heart, but continues to have high expectations for your leadership, for the leaders that you surround yourself with. And I think that makes everybody rise, and so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for your leadership and your years of service. And it is a pleasure knowing that you are leading our district every day and all your service. We're just grateful for you, so thank you so much. All right.
Enough of the mushy stuff.
Yeah, enough. That's right. We're going to move on. Yeah, we're going to vote. We have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of contract for LPS superintendent. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role?
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Most absolutely yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on to item 7K resignations. That's for board information only. We'll move on to item 7L. May I have, retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by James Chartran, Pamela Pretziger, and Lisa Price.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for retirement. And this evening, we're going to hear from Mrs. Keat.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we honor and congratulate three members of the LPS family who are retiring from their positions with Livonia Public Schools. As they leave the district, they take with them a combined total of 80 years of experience. On behalf of the administration, I would like to thank our retirees for their dedicated years of service they provided the students of LPS. And we ask the board to please adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation.
Thank you, Mrs. Keat. Any questions or comments? Boy, three people with 80 years. That's amazing. Wow. Okay. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for retirements. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and that motion carries. Why did I forget that? Okay, the motion carries. All right. Here we are. Moving on to item eight, business matters. We're going to go on for eight D. Eight D, the adoption of amended 2024-2025 budget. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the attached amended budgets for the 2024-2025 school year. General Fund, Funded Projects Fund, Special Education Fund, Debt Retirement Fund, 2023 Bond Fund, 2025 Bond Fund, Sinking Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Food Services Fund, Health and Welfare Fund, Scholarship Fund, and School Activities Fund.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the adoption of amended 2024-2025 budget. And we're going to hear from Mrs. Allison Smith.
Thank you, President Bradford and board. I won't go into too much detail as we've had the opportunity to do so at both our study session and committee whole meeting leading up to tonight. But just to reassure our community, we continue to be very sound financially. We're projecting revenues of 183.3 million this school year, expenditures of 186.6, and an ending fund balance of 30 percent, or I'm sorry, 30 million and 16.1%. So still continue to be in that target 15 to 20% range. So again, ending the school year on a very good financial note.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the adoption of the amended 2024-2025 budget. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to eight E, the adoption of proposed 2025-2026 budget and millage rates. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached proposed budgets for the 2025-2026 school year. General Fund, Funded Projects Fund, Special Education Fund, Debt Retirement Fund, 2023 Bond Fund, 2025 Bond Fund, Sinking Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Food Services Fund, Health and Welfare Fund, Scholarship Fund, and School Activities Fund.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the adoption of proposed 2025-2026 budget and millage rates. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. Once again, with the board's approval tonight, we are looking to levy the same taxes that we did last year. That would be 18 mils on our operating, 4.1 for debt retirement, and slightly lower for sinking fund due to the headly rollback, so 1.5664 mils. That allow us to continue to operate as we need to. We've had the opportunity again to go over detail the proposed budget. We're looking at revenue of 188.5 million for next year, expenditures of 190.4 million, and an ending fund balance of 29.1 million, and a 15.3% fund balance. So continue to be in that 15 to 20% range that we're targeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Frank?
Just that, as Mrs. Smith alluded to, we have had many discussions about this. So we have had discussions in study session over several months in terms of bringing the different amendments to us. And so while we're doing this really quickly, like you said, this has been very thoughtful and very intentional. And we've looked at all the numbers in great detail before we brought it to the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the adoption of the proposed 2025-26 budget and millage rates. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item eight F, the approval of LECC parking lot light installation. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mr. McFarland?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation for the purchase and installation of light poles to the early, to the Livonia Early Childhood Centers parking lot from Voss Light in Grand Rapids, Michigan, in the total of $45,600, which includes contingency.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of LECC parking lot light installation. We're going to hear this evening from Mr. Francis.
Thank you. Good evening. This is, as discussed at last week's committee of the whole meeting, this is the parking lot that was added, the gravel parking lot that was added after the LECC was opened last year. The lights are a really appropriate safety piece for this parking lot. Right now, we obviously have the sun rising early and the sun setting late. But once school starts, it becomes much darker. Many of our staff are the ones that park in that area, and it also is used as overflow parking if there's additional parents or events going on at the building. So this would be done through the sinking fund, and I do recommend that the board please approve.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of LECC parking lot light installation. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item eight G, the approval of furniture purchases for Churchill High School 2021 bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of furniture for Churchill High School from NBS Commercial Interiors, Troy, Michigan, in an amount not to exceed $135,000.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs.
This purchase has to do with the bond renovations that are occurring at Churchill this summer. The spaces around the LMC at Churchill has different offices, and there's also the counseling office that's attached to it. There's a section in the counseling office utilized by students. It's called the Career Information Center, or the CIC for short. We are doing some physical work in that space to make it more appropriate for student use and also to have the staff who are in the counseling office have better visibility of the students when they're working in there. So we're putting some updated furniture in that space, along with, as described at the committee of the whole last week, the staff offices, the department staff offices around the LMC, which are being reutilized for both staff and student use. So again, we're putting some of those spaces that we're also going in and working on. Those are spaces that frankly weren't touched in the last bond. It still had the old flooring, the old ceilings. So we just kind of gave it a little bit of a facelift, if you will, and it'd be very appropriate to have the updated furniture in those spaces. NBS Commercial Interiors is the company that we've been using throughout the bond for our furniture. And the dollars for this are actually former bond contingency dollars that have been recaptured, and we're just moving it over to Churchill.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
Yes, this is probably really more of a question perhaps for Mrs. Smith. Are there any other dollars that are from the former bond that we still need to expend? And is there a time limit on, I mean, I know there is a time limit on those. Where are we in hitting that?
We're definitely well within the time limit. We have about in cash 12 million left from the 2023 bond, and I'm hopeful that'll be spent by June 30th. So if it's not June 30th, it'll be probably July 30th. But our summer 2025 work is well underway. So like I said, I believe we'll be all spent with that on June 30th.
Okay, so this says 2021 bond, but we're talking about the funds that were pulled in 2023.
Yep.
That's why we're okay with that.
And we refer to it as the 2021 bond because that's when the community approved it. But specifically, it'll come out of the series in which has the funds to pay for it.
Okay, thanks. I was just, I had to make sure of the timeline in my head. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, for sure. Any questions, other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Acosta, for the approval of furniture purchase for Churchill High School 2021 bond. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item eight H, the approval of purchase of high school athletic sound systems. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Acosta?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation to purchase and install audio sound systems at Churchill, Franklin, and Stevenson High Schools from Rollin Soundcom, Farmington, Michigan, in the amount of $200,000, which includes contingency.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the approval of purchase of high school athletic sound systems. And one last time, we'll hear from Mr. Francis.
Thank you. Once again, these sound systems will be going to, as mentioned, all three high schools. But there's actually three spaces in each high school that we're going to be putting them in. That's the competition gymnasiums, the pool rooms that have recently been renovated, as you know, and the athletic field, the turf athletic fields outside. Those, all those areas have dated sound systems or no sound systems really to speak of. So we did our due diligence, and the athletic directors had their work to go through as well. And our IT department has also been involved with this purchase and this potential installation. This is going to really enhance those spaces for students, for our student athletes, for our families, and our visitors, et cetera. It really is something that is a bit lacking in some of the spaces. And it's really all the work that we've done in so many spaces throughout those high schools. This will really add one of those pieces to have an experience for students and families.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments?
And just, I didn't mention it, just for the record, this will be paid for through the capital funds.
Thank you. Yeah, these, I know the competition gyms are really going to benefit. I think everybody's going to benefit from these sound systems. But I remember my kids played a lot of basketball in those gyms, and it was hard to hear people. So I think this will be a great upgrade. So, and in the pool areas, in addition to the football fields and everything. So pretty happy about it. So thanks. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the approval of purchase of high school athletic sound systems. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item nine, instruction matters. Nine A, the approval of technology purchase for ACT 18 program. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the ACT 18 capital outlay technology purchased for the ASD, WK, SKL, MOCI, M-O-C-I, and VI programs for the 2025-2026 school year. The technology will be purchased from CDW-Government, Chicago, Illinois. The total amount of these purchases is $33,076.76. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of technology purchase for the ACT 18 program. And this evening, we're going to hear from Mrs. Megan Sproul. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for sharing this again this evening. I know we've talked about this over the past couple of weeks, but we are bringing forward tonight a proposal to purchase some new computers and also the, can I get out the readers? We're so sorry about that. And also the supportive materials to go along with those computers. In addition to that, we're looking for some Chromebooks that have larger screens that make technology accessible to our students with visual impairments. So we're bringing this to you tonight. We've worked with CDW in the past. They've done an excellent job of bringing our technology to our students in a timely manner, so we're excited about that. And as you're aware, this is funded through our ACT 18 budget for these particular programs. A note of clarity, that WKSKL, you don't often see that terminology written out. That's our Work Skills Program. So that's the Garfield Work Skills Program.
Thank you, Mrs. Sproul. I know there's an acronym for many things. And that makes sense when you see it that way, but when you were reading it off, I was like, hmm, what? Sounded like you were talking about a radio station. But okay. All right. Any questions or comments regarding this?
No.
All right. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of technology purchase for the ACT 18 program. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item nine B, the approval of purchase of humanities textbook. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of Cultures and Values: A Global View of the Humanities from Cengage Publishing for high schools for a total amount of $73,947.50. This purchase would include class sets of digital textbooks and a six-year access to student and teacher digital materials.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the approval of purchase of humanities textbook. This evening, we're going to hear from Mr. Etoo, as Mrs. O'Brien is not available this evening. So thank you, Mr. Etoo.
Thank you, President Bradford. Yes, this is for the purchase of Cultures and Values. The current version we have is from 2009, so we're looking to update that to the most current version that they have available for us. And as noted, it's for And as noted, it's for a set of digital textbooks for each of the classrooms at each of the high schools, as well as a six-year access to the student and teacher digital materials.
Thank you, Mr. E. Two. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Frank?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I just want to let the staff know that I will be voting no on this. We've talked in depth about this and I just, I would have liked to see more diversity of, of thought in the, in the presentation of it in terms of, there's just one author. And so in a subject that is so subjective as humanities, I would have liked to see more of a, just more than one author in this, as, as is the case in many of our textbooks. So I will be voting no on this tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
Yes, I understand. And typically, our textbooks do have a variety of authors. This is an unusual situation. And I do understand the thought process behind desiring several authors. I will be, with that said, I will still be supporting the, the purchase. From my understanding, this is, there were only a few sections that were being updated compared to the books that we've been using for the last more than 10 years. So in essence, we've been using the book for 10 years. The sections that were updated, I, I went ahead and read through and read through the lens of, of high school parent. And it's material that I would want my high schooler to have, and I believe it was presented in a manner that was appropriate for high schoolers. So understanding your concern and not disagreeing with your concern, I am in support of going ahead with the purchase.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other questions or comments regarding the humanities textbook? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the approval of purchase of humanities textbook. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
No.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item nine C, the approval of purchase of A P Microeconomics textbook and exam prep book. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Mr. Johnson?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of Achieve for Krugman's Economics for A P from Bedford, Freeman and Worth Publishing and Strive for a Five, Preparing for the A P Microeconomics Exam for high schools for a total amount of $24,898.34. This purchase would include class sets of digital textbooks and a six-year access to student and teacher digital materials.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of purchase of A P Microeconomics textbook and exam prep book. Mr. E. Two?
Thank you, President Bradford. And similar to the humanities textbook that was just approved, this is a, for a class set of digital textbooks for Stevenson High School's A P Microeconomics class. The A P Micro class does not run at Churchill and Franklin at this particular time. And also the six-year access to student and teacher digital materials, as well as the Strive Five for the test prep book for our students.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
Mr. E. Two, you mentioned that it's only being taught at Stevenson and as I understand it, it's because there's not interest right now enough to run a core, a class of it at Churchill or Franklin. Is that correct?
That's correct. Each year, our scheduling assistant principal and principal looks at the course requests by students overall at each of the high schools and make a determination based on those requests if the section or more can run. And at this time, it didn't meet that threshold.
Okay, so it was offered, but students just were not expressing an interest?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of purchase of A P Microeconomics textbook and exam prep book. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item nine D, the approval of purchase of A P Macroeconomics textbook and exam prep book. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Mr. McFarland?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of Achieve for Krugman's Economics for A P from Bedford, Freeman and Worth Publishing and Strive for Five, Preparing for the A P Macroeconomics Exam for high schools for a total of $55,681.61. This purchase would include class sets of digital textbooks and six-year access to student and teacher digital materials.
Support? We have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of purchase of A P Macroeconomics textbook and exam prep book. Again, Mr. E. Two?
Thank you again, President Bradford. So this is identical or similar to the A P Microeconomics. It's the same textbook that we do for A P Macro as well. All three high schools do run our A P Macro course, so the class sets will be for each of those high schools. And it should be noted, as it should have been noted when I talked about the micro, this is supported by the Wayne County Enhancement Millage as well.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. McFarland, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of purchase of A P Macroeconomics textbook and exam prep book. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Mrs. Oakwist, yes?
Thank you so much, President Bradford. We did have a question at our study session from one of our board members as we talked about these textbook adoptions as to where we are in the textbook adoption process cycle. And so I sent to the Board of Education a document prepared by Mrs. O'Brien, our chief academic officer, which highlighted both at the elementary and the secondary level the textbook adoptions that we have been able to do since we first had the Wayne County Enhancement Millage passed. So we really started with that adoption process in 2017 and I always want to make sure that the community understands the impact of that because for several years prior to that time, because of the financial situation in the district and in many districts, we were, we had a frozen textbook budget. And so we did not have dollars in that budget for several years leading up to that point. Since that time, we have been able to make over 40 course adoptions and that may be an entire grade level at an elementary or an entire level in some cases. It also covers content areas and we are really at the point now, as you can see, that we're moving into these more narrow electives that may only have a few sections each year, which tells us that we've really hit all of the core areas. And as you saw on that cycle, we're actually starting to get ready to go back through. And when we were, we embarked on that process in 16, 17, many of those textbooks had been in place for 16 to 18 to 20 years. And now we're able to look at those back on a cycle of anywhere from eight to 10 years, which is really a more appropriate cycle to look at textbooks because of the, the rapid nature of, of information and the ability to access that and have it available to our students. So we just can never understate the impact of those dollars that come from the Wayne County Enhancement Millage. It was one of our five stated priorities was to have updated, relevant and impactful materials for our students and used by our staff. So thank you to the board for continuing to carefully examine each of these as we bring them forward and to each of our staff teams in our leadership in the curriculum department to really go through this textbook adoption cycle. So thanks for letting me highlight that. It just, when I, when I looked at that recent compilation of data, it really was, it made me feel so proud of what we've been able to do for our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. I agree. That was a great document that she sent out for us.
Thank you to Mrs. O'Brien and her entire team.
Yes, thank you. All right, we are going to move on to item 10, Hearing from Board Members. And item 10 A is the second reading of Board Policy D F F Post-Issuance Tax Compliance. May I have a motion, please? There's a lot.
President Bradford?
Mrs. Frank?
Moved that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy D F F Post-Issuance Tax Compliance.
Support? We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the second reading of Board Policy D F F Post-Issuance Tax Compliance. And this evening, we're going to hear from Mrs. Smith.
Thank you. This is a policy that we have updated with the input of Trune Law Firm. We haven't made any changes since its first reading, so I am proposing that it be adopted tonight by the board.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Nope. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the second reading Board Policy D F F Post-Issuance Tax Compliance. May I, Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item 10 B, it's the second reading of Board Policy D I D Audit Financial Statements. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Mrs. Acosta?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Board Policy D I D Audit Financial Statements.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the second reading Board Policy D I D Audit Financial Statements. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. This is another policy we've had the opportunity to discuss at both study sessions and committee meetings. There's no proposed changes since our first reading. I will highlight this ensures our continuing, continuous compliance with the requirement to have an external audit done every year. It's such an important thing that we can reassure our community that not only are we doing things right, but we have an outside set of eyes on our books to make sure that everything is being done right. So this is what that board policy is capturing for us.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Smith. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Acosta, supported by Mr. Johnson, for the second reading of Board Policy D I D Audit Financial Statements. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item 10 C, Second Reading Board Policy D J D Expense Reimbursement. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Mrs. Burton?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached document for Bar, for Board Policy D J D Expense Reimbursement.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Acosta, for the second reading Board Policy D J D Expense Reimbursement. And one more time, I think, Mrs. Smith?
Thank you very much. This is another board policy that we've had an opportunity to discuss multiple times. We don't have any changes since the first reading and I'm recommending the adoption by the board tonight.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Acosta, for, oh, yep, for the second reading of Board Policy D J D Expense Reimbursement. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. Moving on to item 10 D, the establishment of date for first regular board meeting of the 2025-2026 year. May I have a motion, please?
President Bradford?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Moved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District hold its first regular board meeting for the 2025-2026 school year on July 21st, 2025.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the establishment of date for first regular board meeting of the 2025-2026 school year. And we're going to hear from Mrs. Oakwist.
Thank you so much, President Bradford. We have established July 21st, 2025 is our first regular board meeting of the new school year. During that board meeting, we will also cover our required organizational items that will be embedded into that meeting. At that time, we will also adopt the remainder of the meeting schedule for the 25-26 school year. So this evening concludes our, our regular meetings for the 2024-2025 school year. And I believe we had much to celebrate this evening. So it was a wonderful last regular meeting of the year. We genuinely appreciate the continued dedication of our board. Folks may see our board on camera twice a month, but it, their dedication goes far beyond those two evenings and not the least of which are our study sessions, which often go several hours in order to begin to work on the items you end up seeing at these regular meetings. So we have that cycle ready to go for next year and that will be published after we meet and adopt that on July 21st. So we look forward to seeing our community then. Until that time, the board will have a well-deserved respite for the next few Mondays. So have a little fun or a little rest and we'll be back at it in July.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. Any questions or comments? No, but we're ready for a break. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the establishment of date for first regular board meeting of the 2025-2026 school year. Mrs. Acosta, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Acosta says yes. President Bradford?
Yes, and the motion carries. And we're moving on to, boy, we're, item 11. Oh, no, sorry, 10 E, Hearing from Board Members, Hearing from Board Members. Oh, we have somebody who would like to say something. Mr. McFarland?
I, I just, after the first six months of me being on this board, I just wanted to extend a big thank you to the cabinet, Superintendent Oakwist, Teresa, and all of my counterparts on the board. I've learned a lot. I've really enjoyed it. I've enjoyed the hard work and the fun work and I look forward to starting with a brand new school year and seeing it from start to finish. So just wanted to say thank you, everybody, for your support, kind words and a little kick whenever I need it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dave. That was so nice. We enjoy having you on the board. This has been a real blessing to have you join our board this year, so we look forward to the next few years together. So that's great. Any other? Oh, yeah, Rosie starts in the fall.
So she'll be at, they'll both be at E C C. So Rose will be, whatever, I think a tiger or a zebra and Graham will be in daycare.
Wow, awesome.
She'll be in Buchanan the next fall, so.
Wow, okay, so lots of, that'll go fast.
Yes.
So much fun.
Awesome. Awesome. It really is. Any other questions or, or comments? Anybody comments from board members? Mrs. Frank?
I just wanted to say, as we wrap up our year, I wanted to say thank you to our staff for a great two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five year. It was so fun to celebrate so many of them here tonight and just all the work that they've done into Andrea and our Cabinet team, who has worked really hard, as well as our board members. But we have celebrated a lot of accomplishments with our students and our kids, those kids that we have been entrusted with. And to see their graduations and that sort of thing, what a great year. So, I just want to remember to celebrate the year that we came through before we start planning for next year. I know that you guys are already, already on your way to planning for next year. But thanks to all of our team members who have done a great job this year.
Well said. Yep, it's been a great year. Lots of things have happened and you're, the prep is beginning. It'll go by fast, but we do want to wish everybody a really great summer, from students to families to our staff. And, and I do also want to just extend a thank you to the Cabinet and to Mrs. Junta, who does a lot of preparation for us. Thank you so much for all you do for us throughout the year, because we couldn't do it without you. So, I just want to give you that. And of course, we already talked about our superintendent and how wonderful she is. We still think she's wonderful at the end of the meeting here, so, and into next year. So, I hope everybody out there watching us has a great summer and we'll see you July twenty-first. Take care, everybody, and good evening.